Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of August 31st, 2021 is now called to order. The time is 6:03 PM. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public the district mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district vision to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes invocation, pledge of allegiance, resolutions, public comment, consent items, which include three items under Board Office, which are good cause. As the Chair, the three items for good cause are: Approval of the first round candidate interview via Zoom with second round interviews being in-person and travel expenses reimbursed for the second round in-person superintendent search candidates. The maximum amount for the three candidates is not to exceed 10,000. Two, approval of the 60-day process and timeline as presented. Three, approval of the superintendent search advertisement and advertisement locations with a not-to-exceed amount of $1,724. As Presiding Officer, I find there is good cause to add these three items to the agenda. Two items under executive services, seven items under academic services, one item under business services, nine items under human services, four items under operations, three items under attorney recommendation, which too are good cause. Mr. DePree Bruno, please provide an explanation for these two items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first is with regards to the... I don't have my script, but the first one, I believe, if you just give me a second, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. The first one is with regards to the designation of the Sergeant-at-Arms for our Executive Director of Safety and Security. And this will allow our... If the Board approves, the Sergeant-at-Arms to be able to identify individuals and provide them with warnings, as well as remove them from meetings if it's necessary. And the second good cause item is with regards to allowing the superintendent or their designee to implement safety measures during board meetings. And this will require any safety measure that the safety and security officer or the superintendent believes is required, including searches, as well as wanding, and any other measures that are required.
Thank you. As Presiding Officer, I find there is good cause to add these three items to the agenda. Three items under public hearings and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Madam Chair, may I add something to the agenda before we adopt it?
Yes.
May I add to item N, which is unfinished business tabled items? Item C2 from yesterday's agenda, which the Board never acted on. And technically, it's still on the table. But by adding it to unfinished business tabled items, we can leave it there. And at the end of tonight's meeting, if no one pulls it from the table, it dies.
Madam Chair, may I ask what C2 is?
C2 was from yesterday's meeting with regards to adopting any guidelines that the Board wanted to adopt. The Board had a discussion yesterday, but there was no motion or anything that was made because the superintendent had made a recommendation. But there is still an item that was part of that agenda. So if the Board, based on what Ms. Patrica is requesting, to add that to unfinished business, if the Board chooses not to remove it from the table, then the item basically would die.
Okay. I'm sorry, but I don't know what that extra item is.
It was the item from yesterday's special action meeting, which was to adopt guidelines regarding Board Policy 1.181. No action was taken by the Board with regard to that item. So the Board member is requesting that that item be added to untabled business, unfinished business. And again, if no Board member removes it from that section of the agenda, then the item would die.
So do I have... You've heard Ms. Patrica's motion?
I move to adopt the agenda with the good cause items and with the amended item N.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Are you calling on me for discussion?
Yes, Ms. Gittens.
I just think it's superfluous. I think it's unnecessary. We had this discussion yesterday at two different meetings. It was discussed. We heard from the public. It was determined that the superintendent has the right and the authority to make the decision. And if it wasn't brought up yesterday, I think we... The time has lapsed for it, and we should move on.
Is there any other discussion on this?
If I could explain? I don't intend to take any action. The problem is, we concluded last night's meeting without addressing an item that was approved by the Board. The Board approved an agenda to include item C2. We never addressed item C2. As a result, that item still lays on the table today, as we're at this meeting. By putting it in N, unfinished business, tabled items, and allowing it to stay there, it will properly die. This is simply a rules issue.
It's a procedural.
And I'm just going to address the rules issue.
Mr. DePree Bruno?
It's a procedural issue. Just so... There are no items that are just out there outstanding.
Right. Well, since it's a motion, then we have to have public comment?
No, this is a ministerial act. You guys are just talking about your agenda.
Ms. Vaughn?
Okay. Do we have something written, so I know exactly?
It was the approval of the guidelines as discussed by the Board. And what it was, it was after our discussion regarding the discussion.
Where are those?
There are none.
There are none. We had the discussion yesterday for the policy 1.181, which the superintendent reinstated. We had our conversation about that discussion. We had public comment about it. And then there was approval of the guidelines as discussed by the Board. We did not do the approval of that, of the discussed items, which was on... It's written down, so that's why she wants to move it on here, so we can clean that up. Which is approval of the discussion.
All right. I just wanted to be really clear on what I was approving or not approving.
That's what it is. So it will move it there, and it will be clean. Am I correct in that, Mr. DePree Bruno?
Yes. It's really just a procedural matter.
Thank you. I get it.
Okay. May I ask that...
Yes.
Attorney DePree Bruno, just kind of clarify in one lump sum what this is doing and what it will do. Please.
So basically, it will add that item to the agenda under unfinished tabled matters. If no Board member actually removes that item from the table, then it will just die. Nothing will happen.
But there is the possibility, if it's unfinished business, that someone can bring it up for discussion, correct?
If someone wants to remove it from the table, absolutely.
So can I have a vote? If there's no other comments, if I could please have a... Ms. Thomas, do I need to do?
Can you rephrase the motion, please?
Ms. Patrica, could you please state?
I move to adopt the agenda with the good cause items and the amended item N.
And Ms. Thomas, do we... Is it on here for us to vote? Thank you. So could you please record your vote?
The vote I have is approval of the agenda as order of business. Is that...
It's the amended.
It doesn't say amended, but anyway.
So 7-0, motion passes. Ms. Patrica will introduce her guests for the invocation, after which Ms. Gittens will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Patrica, please introduce your guest. Do you have a guest you want to introduce?
I believe Rabbi Luna is on the phone. If we could stand for the convocation. Invocation, my bad. Rabbi Luna received an MA in Hebrew literature and ordination from Hebrew Union College, Jewish Institute of Religion in New York City in 2011. She currently serves as Rabbi of Temple Beth El in Fort Myers. Rabbi Luna is blessed to share her life with her husband and her two young daughters. Rabbi Luna?
Thank you so much for invitation. I'm honored to share an invocation from the Jewish tradition. Almighty God, now more than ever, we thank you for the health and strength to come together this evening for the sacred task of engaging in the needs of our community. God, our community is in dire need of compassion, of unity, of respect, and of love for each other. Help us to remember your essential commandment, "Love thy neighbor." May our discussions and decisions made this evening honor this sacred obligation, so that we live up to your call to love and care for one another. When we speak to each other with respect and dignity, we answer your call. When we truly listen to heartfelt cries for help, we answer your call. And when we do everything in our power to protect and safeguard the health of all of our neighbors, God, we answer your call. Blessed are you, eternal our God, ruler of the universe, who makes us holy with commandments and calls us to engage in the true and deep need of our community. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi Luna.
Ms. Gittens?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, limited, and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. DePree Bruno, please address the item of public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point of the meeting to address the Board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a public comment card, please put it in the basket provided in the back. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff located in the hallway outside of the boardroom. The rules concerning public comment are posted and will be made from the microphone in the back where the stanchions are. Please be advised that the Board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on school district issues. Personal attacks on individuals or abusive language are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing, unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or display of temper are prohibited. Speakers may not address Board members by name, and personal attacks against individual Board members, the Board as a whole, the superintendent, or the district staff are prohibited. Speakers who fail to proper... To follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. There will be one warning, and we ask that you govern yourself accordingly. We will take recesses as necessary if there is not decorum in the chambers. Please remember that it is unlawful and a second-degree misdemeanor to knowingly disrupt or interfere with a school board meeting. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are 20, two minutes if there are 30, and one minute if there are 31 or more. The maximum time allowed for public comment is one hour, 60 speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. We encourage you to address the Board as a whole versus individual Board members as they act as a collective board. Please state your name, whether you live in Lee County, and if you have a student attending one of our district public schools prior to making your comment. I will call your names, five speakers at a time. Please follow the staff's direction in lining up. And Madam Chair, we have 30 speakers this evening.
Okay, thank you. Please make sure you have completed a public comment card if you have... If you intend to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. The cards are located with the staff in the hallway. David Newlin, as the Executive Director of Safety and Security, or your designee for this meeting and future meetings, I ask that you assist the Chair and parliamentarian in providing warnings to members of the public and removing individuals for violation of... Violations of Board Policy 1.11. In addition, if there is not decorum during this meeting, I will call for a five-minute recess. We will continue to recess the meetings as needed, increasing five minutes each time. Members of the dais, when a recess is called, I ask that you leave the chamber. Of course, it goes without saying that during the recess, Board members will not discuss any matter that is pending on the agenda or will come before this body to avoid any sunshine violations. I will reiterate what Ms. DePree Bruno just said, in that it is unlawful and a second-degree misdemeanor to knowingly disrupt or interfere with a school board meeting. We would appreciate it if you would state your name, whether you live in Lee County, and if you have children in our schools, prior to making your comment. Mr. DePree Bruno, please proceed with public comments.
Thank you. When I call your name, please line up.
Speakers ready? I apologize for the delay. He's bringing it.
Good evening. Danielle Hagman, here on behalf of the Lee County Democratic Caucus. I live in Lee County. I have two kids in Lee County School District. I'd like to begin first by thanking the Board. I know you guys are in an impossible position, pretty much day in and day out, shuttled back and forth between the powers above and the people below. I don't envy your positions, but I'm glad that you're here in them, trying to do your best every day for our kids. That being said, I know we are all passionate about our children, and I know that we will all always choose our own child above other people's children. It's just part of being a parent. I think we need to ask ourselves if our kids are truly negatively affected by temporary mask mandates, or if they are just mirroring what they're seeing and hearing at home. Because would they truly feel that way if they weren't already hearing it, is my question? And that's just something we need to reflect on.
Hello, my name is Amy French. In full disclosure, I don't have children in the district, but I am an employee of the district. Tonight, though, I'm speaking as a private citizen, because I feel that a few loud voices are getting most of the attention, and the aggression displayed has made others like me reluctant to attend, to make their voices heard, or they're afraid of getting COVID. So I'm speaking for the people who know that public health is part of public education, that it's all about "we" and not about "me." I'm speaking for those who know that neither the vaccine nor masks are causing our hospitals to be full in record numbers of deaths, that COVID is doing that. So thank you to Dr. Savage for being part of the solution of our community to mitigate the spread of COVID with the mask mandate. For others here tonight, or others listening, who want to be part of the solution, we are in desperate need of bus drivers and teachers, so I encourage you to apply.
Denise Nyström. Even though I think that the decision about masks lacked the appropriate research, the superintendent, you have brought more integrity to this district in the past eight weeks than it has had in the past four years. And those eight weeks have been an uphill battle because of district members fighting against you instead of supporting you. And I want you to know that I do have confidence in your integrity and in your ethics. Thank you for taking on this monumental task. I am concerned, however, that the union does not actually have enough members to be considered a union. I have requested two weeks ago from public records the number of people that pay union dues, and I have not gotten that information back. There should be proof that they actually qualify as a union, or they should be dissolved. And again, I will say to the Board that I hope you are focusing on the start date for a superintendent for the new school year, because quality candidates cannot be found as they are fulfilling their obligations at other school districts. And Dr. Savage should be considered. As a point of information, we were accused of inciting fights yesterday, when in fact none of us incited anything out there. There was a certain special interest group member that started two brawls, and Cindy Banyer was loud and obnoxious and got into everybody's face. I think that the staff that are on premise should make sure that they get right who it is that's inciting what's going on.
Christine Divijeli, I'm with Power to Parent. I don't think I've been so happy to be here until tonight. I am just pleased. I'm also very disappointed in a lot of you up there for attempting to strip away the rights of Lee County parents. Parents, I want you to know, it is your right as the parent to educate your kids about whatever you feel is best, even the effectiveness of masks if you so choose. It is your right as the parent to educate your kids about their First Amendment rights, so they feel empowered to stand. It is your right as the parent to send your child to school without a mask on their face if you, the parent, so... if you, the parent, so choose. If your child feels bullied even by any member of staff by being put in an isolation room, apply for the Hope Scholarship. You can do that very easily. It is your right as a parent to remove your children from this criminal corrupt institution. Microschools are coming to Lee County. If you pull your kids from there, we will have a safe place for them. And tomorrow, if you choose as the parent to send your child to school without a mask, make sure you tell them to be respectful. No ma'am, no sir, I'm sorry, please call my mom. And if any member of staff tells them that they need to follow them and go into an isolation room, you, you tell them, no ma'am, I need you to call my mom immediately. Call my parent immediately. No ma'am, no sir. There is someone right now on the internet telling your kids to cause a ruckus tomorrow. Know that that will be no one's child in this room. You guys are done. You just don't know it yet.
I, we really don't want any responses to speakers, so this is their first warning. If we hear any more responses, we will ask you, ask Mr. Newlin to please address it. Now, will the following individuals please line up? Kanye Truitt, Jane Manoray, Eric Metzner, Robert Roper.
My name is Robert Daniels. I've been a science teacher with the district for about nine years now. And while I understand why we have put the mandate into place, I feel that the mandate's going to prove to be useless unless the board revisits the idea of providing each student every day of, during this mandate duration of thirty days with an N95 mask. At the very least, we can provide an ethic cost for those students on grounds of equity if nothing else. But we know from the science that the cloth mask their mom made for them does absolutely nothing but breed bacteria and hold it against their face. So if you're going to make them suffer through that, at least give them the small bit of protection the medical-grade masks would provide.
Too short for that. My name is Conia. I would like to start by saying watching all the kings and queens up there drink is making me awfully thirsty. So I really wish I could have some water right now, but as lowly peasants, I guess we'll sit here and just stay thirsty. Next, I would like to address the fact that you guys went and made a decision without even listening to us yesterday, and I feel that this was intentional. I do think, and I have seen this board do this over and over again, you put this pressure on the superintendent so that you didn't have to answer to your constituents and he could take the blame for it. And I am sick and tired of you not answering questions for us. I am sick and tired of not being heard, and I am sick and tired of you violating the law to take my parental rights. I want to tell you something about a smile. A smile is scientifically proven to release endorphins in the brains of humans. When that, endorphins are released, that creates positive reactions within the body, including decreasing stress and anxiety, which then is a long-term effect of decreasing heart problems and depression and suicidal thoughts. And you're not even letting our kids see that. You're not letting them have a simple human right like seeing someone smile, not to mention what it gives to the person receiving the smile who may be on the break that day. I have removed one child from the school district, and I was trying to give the other the choice, but I am not going through what I went through last year with him, which was threats of suicide, severe depression, and anxiety. I had to seek therapy because of the rules you're putting in place without thinking about the long-term impact to these children and their mental health.
Hi, my name is Jan Manoray. I'm a resident of Lee County for thirty-plus years. I don't have a child in the school system now, but I had a son who went through the Lee County school system from kindergarten to twelfth grade, playing under Sam Siriani Greenway football. So, but I'm an advocate by profession. I just happen to do it in a different science, which is prostate cancer. I, I want to thank you guys for putting expert recommendations, giving them credence and importance during a pandemic, because we are in a pandemic, which none of us have been through before. We need our pandemic experts, and we want to advocate on behalf of children to protect them and everyone else. So at the very least, we know that our pandemic experts are the CDC, which is our public health arm of our government, the Florida Department of Health, which is a public health arm of our state government. And we, in addition, we have the American Academy of Pediatrics, who has given a recommendation that they strongly endorse the use of safe and effective infection control procedures to protect children and adolescents. During the COVID-19 pandemic, effective infection prevention and control requires the correct and consistent use of a well-fitting face mask. This is pediatrics. Face masks should fit over the mouth and nose and fit snugly along the side of the face without any gaps. In addition, there is a Florida arm of the American Academy of Pediatrics, and I would say that they have resources on their website for parents, for kids who are afraid of masks or struggle with them, because we all care about the kids. Let's remember we have that in common. So I want to thank you for standing up for the kids, listening to pandemic experts. I'm not one of them, and neither are you, and neither is the superintendent, but you did the right thing by listening to the experts on behalf of our children. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Jordan Connor, Levon Grant, Ralph Ortiz, Marsha Ellis, Kurt Hook.
Good evening. My name is Eric Metzner. I'm a twenty-year veteran teacher here in Lee County. I do not have any students attending or children. Some of the options that I have brought up in the past meetings, I have heard that some of those options are being talked about now. I wanted to say thank you for that. Thank you for at least considering possibilities. Some options that I didn't get to prior to this, I did cover some split school days possibly, Zoom, Google Classrooms as well, attending different days of school. What I didn't get to was offering minimum contact option, where students may attend half-days and provide coursework digitally during follow-up hours. That was another possibility. These are just options, and these options, just like the mitigation efforts that are being conducted throughout the district, also provide layers of possibilities for the students. In fact, it also offers possibilities for our teachers. I don't speak about that very much. There is a little bit of, you know, I would say, a little bit of feedback that comes to us as teacher leaders, but our teachers are desperately needing to be heard as well. So I want to make sure that that's, that's, that's on the table as well. And I do appreciate what you do. I appreciate you listening to every comment. Thank you so much for the time tonight.
Robert Roper, also known as Ward Cleaver. Imagine a board that refuses to recognize the parental rights of the children until a law is passed, and even then usurps their medical authority. Imagine a board that establishes policies exclusively based on only one side, such as the masks and LGBTQ. Imagine a board that fails to provide requested records via the Freedom of Information Act or supplies false records. Imagine a board that consistently misrepresents the facts during public meetings. Imagine a board that purposely have ignored any email of substance of mine for over a year. Imagine a board that publicly removed an objectionable poster from last year's student code of conduct, yet the poster is still displayed in the schools now, and boys are still allowed in girls' restrooms today. Imagine a board that recognizes the accomplishments of people based on their sexual preference. On October 5th, this board will vote on an LGBTQ History Month. If we want to recognize people based on their sexual preference, then we should have an adultery day for Mr. Clinton.
But you're out of order.
Just like the parent that has the right to make...
Warning.
Sorry?
That's your first warning.
Just like the parent that has a right to make a medical decision for their child, they also have the right to set moral standards. You must agree, all our students' standards, our parents' standards are different from one another, but each parent has that right. What other social or emotional issue, name one, that you encourage a person to change the person to the way they act instead of changing the way they act to meet their body?
My name is Levon Grant. I have three daughters that attend Three Oaks Elementary School. "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result." These are the words credited by the acclaimed Albert Einstein. We are, we are on year two of this COVID roller coaster, and yet you want to continue to implement the same policies and mandates that did not work the year prior. The policy response to COVID, particularly as applied to our children, have been wickedly inept. We now have a year and a half worth of data. To not use that data to craft better policies and create better outcomes for our children are simply unethical. I currently have three daughters who attend Three Oaks Elementary. I have researched the data on leeschools.net, which you guys list all the COVID cases in all the public Lee County school systems. Our school only has thirty-one cases, four of those which were the staff. That means twenty-seven kids in one month out of the entire school. That is 3.4% of everyone that attends there, and that is on your website. Where is my option as a tax-paying resident of Lee County? Why are you catering to one side? Last year, you mandated masks and gave the concerned parents options on what they could do with their children in regards to COVID-19 and their education. And now this year, our schools, our school year is being hijacked by those same parents and board members who live in fear. What, what you're forcing us to do now is to live in fear, it's communism. America is supposed to be the land of the free. Every, everyone from all walks of life wants to be here to have the freedoms and opportunities we have as Americans.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ralph. I have two daughters in the Lee County school system, North Fort Meyer Academy for the Arts. I'm here not to say thank you for anything you guys have done. Unfortunately, I'm not proud of anything you guys have done yet. Let's hope we can change that, okay? What I'm here for is, if you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. But give me the option to parent my children the way I choose to bring them up, not the way you choose to bring up my kids. I'm sincerely, just sincerely asking you guys to provide us and give us the option to have Home Connect for our kids, okay? If you choose you want my kid to wear a mask to school, my kid will not. I come from Chicago, Illinois. I'm a product of the most corrupt Board of Education system in the country, and I'm starting to see the same thing here. Our, our county, Lee County, is not under a state of emergency nor under a mask mandate. So you have no authority to invoke a mask mandate for your schools. So give us the right to choose. That's all I ask.
Will the following individuals please line up?
Hello, my name is Marsha Ellis, and I, this would have been my twentieth year teaching school. I've been an employee of the district for about a decade. I spent most of my career at varsity Lakes Middle School, teaching science and teaching exceptional student education. I, like many, many members of the community, have been in a catch-22 situation, because I, I have severe allergies and it's not recommended that I take the vaccine. It doesn't look like that COVID is just magically going to disappear as much as we would all like it to, and the downward pressures that I experienced as an educator are being felt by teachers, support staff, bus drivers, administrators, and everyone in this district. I had to make a difficult decision to step away after twenty years. I would like to say that thank you for your service, thank you for following the CDC and the APA guidelines that mitigate the spread of COVID in our schools, especially among the vulnerable. From the schools, COVID spreads out into the broader community, infecting vulnerable family members, filling up our hospitals, placing stress upon our first responders as well. What you've done is a moral and just action. Thank you for valuing human health above political division, especially for the vulnerable, those exceptional learners, those who may be immunocompromised, and those who are not eligible for a vaccine. Thank you for showing mercy and compassion and modeling courage and civility for our...
Thank you.
My name is Curtis. I do live in Lee County. I have three grandchildren in the school district, and I want to thank you for the opportunity. Our Lord God put our parents in charge of their children. I believe if we're going to make policy that encroaches on that relationship, that we always ought to side, or err on the side of the parents. So I believe that parents should have the right to decide if their children are to be masked for four, six, eight hours a day in the schools that they are paying for. Thank you for the opportunity.
Tara Jenner. I noticed earlier today you were talking about public comment, and I've been looking at the public comment policies 1.11, and half the things that you have in here are not included in what you've recently been including in your comments. So I also looked at the fact that you guys changed the public comment policy on the website yesterday, just moments frankly before the 1:00 p.m. meeting, and so I scoured Policy 1.10, which deals with how to change policy, and I looked at Section 3, which says "The school board may determine that the public health, safety, and welfare is endangered, and that immediate action is required to protect the public interests. When this occurs, the school board, at any meeting in which a quorum is present, may adopt emergency policies." And it goes on to talk a little bit further about how the fact that this may only be done when there is an immediate danger to the public health, safety, and welfare, and it shall be published at the district website prior to the policy action, and that notice of the proposed emergency policy action shall be provided when and to the extent feasible, and that the superintendent shall properly record the effective date of such emergency policy, and it shall not exceed a ninety-day time period. You need to follow your own policies. You can't delegate this to somebody else to make a sucesponte decision on the spot, and you haven't specified why there are certain policies that come into play in this district. And I'm personally tired of seeing rules for thee but not for me. Everybody on the dais gets to have their water. We're being told now we can't. We're being told our bags are going to be searched, but we're not given due process...
I am the parent of two current and one former Lee County School District students, and I'm a healthcare provider here in Lee County, currently working in a COVID unit and spending the vast majority of the last year and a half working to help COVID patients recover from this horrible disease. I'm currently wearing a surgical mask to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. There's no guarantee that this mask will protect me from somebody coughing, sneezing, or breathing heavily on me that has the COVID virus, but if the vast majority of us wear our masks, cloth, surgical, and/or COVID, N95 masks, we can help reduce the spread of this virus. And I commend the board for adopting the mandatory masking policy for at least 30 days, because we all want this pandemic to end. We thought it was over a couple of months ago, and we're all feeling pretty good about that, because I'm tired. My coworkers are tired. I spent an hour and a half today talking to family members of COVID patients that I'm caring for and doing my very best to get them home, back with their families. I currently have a family member who is a teacher in the school district in the emergency room at Lee, within Lee Health with COVID-19, unable to breathe. We don't know. Is he going to be okay? We're worried about him. Children spread this virus. There's currently at least 15 pediatric patients within the Lee Health system with COVID-19. There's 100 patients on ventilators with COVID-19. Once you get on a ventilator, your odds are very low. Children might not get as sick as many children might not get as sick with COVID-19, but they can certainly spread it to the vulnerable. Thank you for the mask policy.
Good evening. My name is Todd Thomas, and I live in Lee County. I don't have any children in the system now, but I've had two children to come up through the system completely. I'm here to talk about, in a nonpartisan way, a few simple words that I have. And as a person that's been active in the system here for 25 years, I volunteered, I'm active on the Thomas Alva Edison Regional Science and Inventors Fair, I've been a volunteer from Sony Electronics, I've been a teacher for four and a half years, so I have a good, unique perspective. We need nonpartisan civility. This disease or virus does not know creed, religion, sexual orientation. It does not know that. What happened to the hybrid model? As we move into this decision, all of a sudden sprung on the parents, and God bless the parents with children in the system now. We need N95 masks for those children. We need to have some type of opt-out method for those that do want to keep their parents at home. Again, I'm in the middle. I'm nonpartisan. We need something for everyone. What about our teachers? When I learned how to teach and learned scaffolding and took my five through nine math test, there was nothing in there that talked about COVID. What it talked about is professionalism and working for these students to teach these children. We have adapted to COVID. Why can't we all adapt to COVID so we can move together to eradicate this disease? It's going to be paramount that we do that, no matter which side of the fence you're on. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Yoram Delviniac, Mercedes Price Harry, April Jenkins, A. Buonpastore, Lori Fahey.
Dr. Edward F. Grass, you know me and all the children in this school district I consider to be mine. Amen. Never in my life have I witnessed the display of indecency and disrespect that you, the school board, showed during your pseudo-emergency mask mandate. The true colors of your core beliefs and of your disdain for the citizens and students of Lee County is clear. You've received copies of my letter to the Department of Education asking you to be investigated for malfeasance. I will continue to push for that until I see action. You embody many, if not all, the traits of a Marxist totalitarian state.
Sir, you're out of order. This is your first warning. No personal attacks on the board.
Consider it the way you wish. We see your unwillingness to show respect, to tell the truth, and follow through on promises, votes, and commitments, all in the interest of appeasing the political left and special interest groups. I hope that you lie awake on your beds at night and think about the harm you're causing to children whose education has been entrusted to you by their naive and unsuspecting parents and the uninformed voters. You can still reclaim honor and trust. Do the right thing. And how grateful I am for all of these courageous men and women who show up at these meetings and make their voices heard with truth and justice in their hearts, and who refuse to bow to the gods of this age and are willing to pay whatever the cost for their steadfastness.
Good evening. Anthony Buonpastore, voting citizen of Lee County, Fort Myers Shores. All my kids are grown up and through the school system already. Have a family member that teaches there. Just like to say I'm disappointed with the school board's decision to pass the decision on the mask mandate to an unelected official when it was clearly the board's responsibility as elected officials. Two weeks ago, you took, in my opinion, the correct position of allowing parental discretion of whether it was healthy and correct for their child to be masked the entire school day. I feel it was a bit cowardly of the board to take this way out, this easy way out. What I voted for was elected representation making these decisions. I am not denying the current COVID difficulties, but masking children, I believe, provides no benefit statistically and is harmful psychologically, emotionally, and probably medically as well. As a voting citizen, I'll be watching the board's future decisions at future meetings and at Election Day. Thank you.
You're from Derby, New York, Lee High Acres, Florida. I have no kids in the school system, thank God. I love my country, but I fear my government. I've come to these school board meetings for the last eight years. There've been a lot of lousy school boards. This is the worst school board I've ever seen. Again, the worst school board I've ever seen. Shame on you. You people are terrible.
Mr. Delviniac, this is your first warning, please.
Well, I, obviously, I'm out of order. I've addressed the school board, so you're out of order. I'm sorry. The thing is, addressing individuals on the school board is my right, really. If you vote for something that I'm against, I have the right to address you on that vote. And why you want to address the whole school board, that's a bunch of crap, a bunch of crap. We got the right to speak. You vote for us. And the lawyer, you call off people because you don't like what they say. When they speak the truth against this board, you get arrogant to these speakers. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mercedes Price Harry. I have a second grader and fifth grader here in Lee County. I've been here for 18 years. I'm a proud member of Grandpa's Lee County. Personal, passionate, progressive, let me offer some perspective. I cheered for Savage, and then 1.181 went into effect. I was devastated. Two weeks ago, we spoke and you acted. Then the surge being experienced around the world hit, even in places with mask mandates. Consider this. Hundreds, if not thousands, of Lee County kids and teachers have now tested positive and are stronger than ever. Like me, they carry the antibodies. These kids and teachers must wear masks? Why? Are they N95 masks? Anything else is useless. Ask all of the kids and teachers that wear masks and got COVID this month, many people that I know. My asthmatic seven-year-old who just recovered from getting COVID at school must wear a mask? Why? It was a cakewalk, by the way. Ask yourself, what is the purpose of the mask? Then ask, what is the purpose of forcing those that carry antibodies to wear them? People are welcome to get a shot, wear two masks, a face shield, latex gloves, go for it. If masks work and you're wearing one, why force others to? Will you credit the masks when the inevitable decline occurs after this spike? Show us the district as personal. Show us you're passionate and progressive, but show us some perspective. Show us that you don't vote on emotion and corporate media talking points. Those that have recovered post-COVID this year, those that signed the opt-out, and those that want to have the ultimate say in their children's health, life, and education should be exempt. Remember when liberals said, "My body, my choice"? Now they say, "Not your body, not your choice." Lastly, what is an expert? Organizational leaders and scientists funded by special interests, doctors who deny medications over politics? Show us you can be progressive, be leaders, not followers. Thank you.
My name is April. I have five kids. Three of them are still in the Lee County system. I have a daughter named London Jenkins. I want you to remember her name. She has an autoimmune disease that she's had since she was five. She's been on immunosuppressants since she was five. She's been on methotrexate, which is also a chemo drug, since she was five. So for everyone that has antibodies and chooses not to wear a mask, guess what? You affect her. And I taught my kids, all five of them, care about your neighbor. What happened to that? What happened to just being concerned about the other person in the room? What about being respectful to one another? And then you say the school can pick up the tab for the mask. You pay $100 or $1,000 for phones. You don't have problems with that? You don't have problems with your kids being on the phone, or the phone being the babysitter, but you have a problem that because they said, "For my child, wear a mask." Now, all the board members, along with your governor, can tell you, "I've been emailing them since day one." Because my child has an autoimmune disease that she had no control over, and that some other child, maybe one of your children, go to school with her that won't wear a mask. How would that affect her? She gets sick and get a cold and stay sick for a month. You and I get sick and get a cold and stay sick for a week. Why should she be affected? She's not important? Is she not important? Do you care about just more than your child? I saw a child today be disrespectful to rules that was already in place. He came in and pulled the tape up and sat down and didn't ask why. His mother didn't say, "No, that's not what we do." She went up to the board member and said, "You know they did." It's respect. We teach them that at five. Please, ma'am, and it's not just because you can be quiet, it's not just because you say it nicely, but actually think about what you're saying from your heart.
Will the following individuals please line up? Melissa Giustina, Iris Ramirez, Angela Mitchell, Christina Gay, Susan C., Megan Howard.
I'm Lori Fahey. I brought my son with me tonight. This is Sam. You may have remembered him from the opt-out, a couple of you that were on the board that many years ago. I had to bring him tonight because I wanted him to see the change in our community with a board that has become a seven-handed monster and is trying to put us under the thumb.
Ms. Fahey, this is your first warning.
That was my opinion. We're speaking at a mic in the back of the room, which on the television looks like the Witness Protection Program. We belong up there. I left you a copy of the organizational chart, because I think each one of you needs to review that, and I hope everyone in the public does too. We, the public, are on the top of the organizational chart. The school board works for us, and we need to get that back. I'm tired of not being able to speak. I'm tired of seeing you treat the public rude and like children. This is not the way any other board in Lee County works. We have rights, and you need to listen to us, because these are our public schools. I was told I couldn't sit beside my own son in this boardroom. We had to have a seat between us. We're walking down aisles here, can't talk to the board members, and I'm mainly upset about this COVID-19 boardroom policy protocol. It has nothing to do with safety. It has everything to do with removing the public's voice and our rights, and I need to see it change. Anything? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Giustina. I have two kids at an elementary school in Lee County. I want to express my opinion about wearing the masks on kids. I believe it should continue to be a parent's choice. A mandate is not a law. DeSantis gave us parents the choice, and that's all we want. If your kid wants to wear it, wear it, but don't make us have to force our kids to wear it. Modern psychology explains, "Without face, we don't exist as independent beings." Face coverings and masks are ancient tools used to break people down psychologically. This is the beginning of deleting individuality. He who does not know his history is certainly condemned to repeat it. Masks don't work. These poor kids are breathing in carbon dioxide all day. The masks are dirty. They reuse them. Every parent knows that a child is going to reuse the mask. Do you have a mask for today? Grab one out of the car. It's on the floor. A virus is so small. Any of the cloth masks or the medical masks that are required will not prevent a virus to get through the masks. Have you ever used a microscope? I've not worn a mask in a year and a half and have not gotten sick. I don't clean the carts before I use it. It's my right. I don't care. If they're scared for your child or they're sick, they need to stay home, not my well child. I don't even walk my child to their first day of kindergarten last year. You know how much that killed me? And then we couldn't do it this year either, for the first graders. Kids are getting depressed. They're overweight, anxiety, suicide is up. Stop making us non-maskers seem like we don't care about our neighbors and selfish. It's not like that at all. Clubs are canceled. Social gatherings are canceled. Do you think these kids go to friends' homes wearing masks? No. We implore you to reverse your decision on the mask mandate, and why is my opt-out form not sustained?
Hello, my name is Angela Mitchell. I currently have two students in Lee County schools, one in elementary as well as in middle school. One of my biggest concerns is the quickness in all of this, how it has happened. We got this taken down yesterday and got a note received today, and within that, we weren't given any options or any time or any availability to get together what we need as parents that you're saying that we have to have in order for us to get the medical exemptions necessary for our children. We haven't been given any time. This is the beginning of deleting individuality. He who does not know his history is certainly condemned to repeat it. Masks don't work. These poor kids are breathing in carbon dioxide all day. The masks are dirty. They reuse them. Every parent knows that a child is going to reuse the mask. Do you have a mask for today? Grab one out of the car. It's on the floor. A virus is so small. Any of the cloth masks or the medical masks that are required will not prevent a virus to get through the masks. Have you ever used a microscope? I've not worn a mask in a year and a half and have not gotten sick. I don't clean the carts before I use it. It's my right. I don't care. If you're scared for your child or they're sick, they need to stay home. Not my well child. I don't even walk my child to their first day of kindergarten last year. You know how much that killed me? And then we couldn't do it this year either, for the first graders. Kids are getting depressed. They're overweight, anxiety, suicide is up. Stop making us non-maskers seem like we don't care about our neighbors and selfish. It's not like that at all. Clubs are canceled. Social gatherings are canceled. Do you think these kids go to friends' homes wearing masks? No. We implore you to reverse your decision on the mask mandate. And why is my opt-out form not sustained?
Hello, my name is Angela Mitchell. I currently have two students in Lee County schools, one in elementary as well as in middle school. One of my biggest concerns is the quickness in all of this, how it has happened. We got this taken down yesterday and got a note received today. And within that, we weren't given any options or any time or any availability to get together what we need as parents that you're saying that we have to have in order for us to get the medical exemptions necessary for our children. We haven't been given any time. A day and a half is not enough time. And on top of that, talking to both of the principals at each of the schools today, if my child does not go to school tomorrow because I don't feel as though putting a mask on them is necessary and as well as my rights, it is an unexcused absence. Do you know what that does? I'm sure you do because that goes against their personal record, okay? Number one. Number two, while we're sitting here, we get an email that says Home Connect will not be available for our students, that if you have a problem with this, you're more than welcome to go into homeschooling. I'm sorry, that is not an option for everyone. What are we then supposed to do? And everybody wants to talk about, "Love thy neighbor." Do you know what the beginning of that verse says? "Love thy God with all of thy heart." That is the most important thing. God gave me my children and gave me the wisdom in order to raise them as I feel necessary. And you have no rights to say what those rights are for me, or my kids, or anyone else in the school district.
My name is Christina Gay. I have two children in Lee County school system, and I am disgusted by all of you. Disgusted. That you think that you have the right to tell me as a parent what I have to do with my children. They are my children, not yours. You got that? I voted for you and I will vote you right out, just like half the people in this room right now. You are disgusting.
This is your last warning. Thank you, Mr. Newlin. Ma'am, you're out of order.
Five minutes, please. Mr. Bruno, can we reconvene, please?
The next speaker, please.
This is not about healthcare. This is about control. You have proven yourself so untrustworthy and indecent to we the parents and the children. Last night was such an obscene, staged, pretentious opportunity for your agenda and the media. You treated us terribly. Called upon the police and the sheriff's department who showed up. Like, what did they need to be here for? The China virus. It's just a short shutdown. It's just 15 days to slow the spread. It's just social distancing. It's just six feet apart. It's just to protect yourself. It's just to protect others. It's just online learning. It's just mandatory so kids can go back to school. It's just virtual graduations. It's just a piece of cloth. It's just a face shield. It's just one injection. It's just two injections. Oh, it's just a few bad reactions. It's just a booster. It's just another booster in six months. It's just another mask mandate that you're putting upon our kids. It's just putting fear into everyone. It's just wrong. And it's just going to backfire on all of you. I will lay bets that most of you will not run for reelection because you know your days are done.
Ma'am, we do not have people standing behind the speaker, so if you can get on the other side of the station, thank you.
Hi, my name is Megan Howard. I am a mom of a fifth grader, a 10-year-old. I'm vaccinated here in Cape Coral, actually. I'm actually here to thank the board for having the courage to put safety before popularity. I wear many hats, like a lot of people today. I didn't write down my thoughts. I'm giving to you from my heart. I'm a nurse. I've worked in this community with kids for 25 years. I'm a nurse practitioner for the last four. We have never seen anything like this. And when we talk about isolating children, I would give you pause to see what our kids are going through in the NICU where I work and the deliveries that we are going to with mothers delivering early, who cannot even come in to see their babies, because we have 80 babies in our NICU. We've never gone through anything like this before. The first round, we weren't hit so hard. This Delta virus is different. I'm not trying to scare people. My mask is more for you. I'm vaccinated. But I'm garbed up every day, every day, like I was this morning, going to another mom delivering a preterm baby in my N95 and all my gear, thankful that that baby could stay with her and not have to be moved to our NICU. I have a colleague, a NICU nurse in the ICU downtown, who has a senior in this school district who is probably not going to survive COVID, a woman in her 40s. I don't want that for you. I don't want that for our kids. It's a temporary thing. We don't know how to deal with this virus. We just want our kids to have the best chance at safety, and we want everyone to be safe. Thank you.
Dr. Iris Ramirez, resident of Lee County, 95,000 children in the school district. I stand opposed to my taxpayer dollars, school supplies, resources, such I stand opposed to my taxpayer dollars, school supplies, resources, such as teachers' time, et cetera, for promoting sexual behaviors. A special month or any other activity to celebrate various sexual activities under the guise of promoting the people who practice them is not what our school resources should be spent on. We do not send children to school to promote various social or political agendas. I speak for many when I say that people who are still fascinated by the taste of crayons should not be exposed to sexuality of any type in the school setting. Put the children first, not political or social crusades. School is not a political rally, nor is it a forum for promoting social change. Stick to the long-held traditions of educating children. School board, just say no to drugs, sexuality, or sex being promoted on school grounds under any guise or any pretext.
I would like answers to three questions tonight. Are you planning on using school resources to promote, celebrate, bring attention to folks because of their sexuality? Question two, where can the public get the list of social, political events you are considering or planning for our children to be exposed to? Thirdly, what are the plans to keep board members from making partisan comments or insulting the public or showing a general lack of decorum and respect? Tonight's invocation mentions this, about respect. And the example is two Tuesdays ago, Ms. Vaughn's rude outburst, which we cannot forget, and I'd like to know what the board is going to do to self-discipline.
Ma'am, excuse me, ma'am. We're not...
What?
Okay, you're done. Thank you. You're done. Just a reminder, we don't make personal attacks on individual board members. Thank you. Excuse me, ma'am. You've made your comment. You're out of order at this point. First warning. Madam Chair, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. I would just like to thank everybody for their comments this evening, and we will move
What is your name, sir?
Thank you for your time. My name is Jordan Moran. I'm a father of three girls in the Lee County system. I'm very happy with their school. I'm obviously here to oppose the mask mandate. I am raising my daughters to have respect, honor, and integrity, to do the right thing, even when no one is looking. I want to ask you how you can force me to mask my children. Are you taking my freedom? The health and well-being of my children is my responsibility. Masks do not work. It says it on the box. As people on both sides have asked for N95 or specific medical masks, you are not requiring that. So masks are pointless. The vaccine does not even protect you against getting coronavirus. Breathing fresh air, exercising, along with proper nutrition, should be number one on the list. Masks cause more harm than good. Why should I restrict my children from breathing fresh air? Where is my freedom of choice? Are you forcing me to make my child wear a mask? Please reconsider a mask opt-out or have certain classrooms specifically for masked or unmasked children. I will sign any petition or waiver for that, have my child be in a certain masked school or unmasked school, and have certain schools masked. Why can we have private schools? We can pay money and send our schools to send our children to private school and not have to wear a mask. How does that make any sense? So private school children can breathe fresh air, but our children...
Sir, thank you for your comment. Madam Chair, this concludes public comment.
Thank you. Again, I would like to thank everyone for their comments this evening. I would also like to thank the many emails that we receive on a daily basis and the phone calls that we receive. Whether we agree or disagree, I appreciate the fact that you are contacting us. And the next item on the agenda is our action items. The documents for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all of the materials, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished table items portion of the agenda? Ms. Giavennelli?
I have none.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
No pulls this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kittens?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yep.
Three. Thank you. And Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda consent items with the exception of F3?
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of F3.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. May I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Morgan, thank you. We have six to one. Dr. Savage, please introduce your administrators in attendance with any new assignments that were approved under the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, we do not have any administrators in attendance for the administrative appointed today.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a F3 pull to address. Dr. Savage, please read your recommendation for pulled item, and that would not be his pulled item, that would be our pulled item. Yes, thank you. So the recommendation for F3 is the approval of the superintendent's search advertisement and advertisement locations. Ms. Vaughn, you are the one that pulled this? Oh, can we have a motion to... For this? To bring this forward? Ms. Patrica?
I move that we approve item... What was it? F what?
F3.
F3, approval of superintendent's search advertisement and advertisement locations.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Vaughn? Okay, and discussion. And Ms. Vaughn, I'm going to have you...
Yeah, this is actually a very simple item. It's something that I emailed the board about earlier, or at the end of last week. When we initially looked at the list that we were given by Ray and Associates, they believed that the Florida Association of School Administrators, FASA, was free. And it turns out, when this was investigated in the HR department by Suzette Rivera, she discovered that there was actually a $300 fee to do this, even though we are members of that group. I thought it was going to be easy to dispense with this because originally we were going to do it in the meeting yesterday. But I wanted to make sure that since originally we were saying it was a no-cost item, I went ahead and included it, and it's for the board to decide, this $300 fee. Now, I might add, and I did add this when I sent you the information last week, that our representative, Molly, said to me when I went over this with her, she said, "We're a big district," but she felt like with all the other, the free ones and the others that we have listed, that a $300 expense is probably, this is her recommendation, probably not even worth it. It's $300, but instead of just myself arbitrarily not including it or not bringing it up, I wanted to bring it to the board. And again, I thought we could do this quickly yesterday, but that meeting was canceled. So that's what we're looking at. So Ms. DePree Bruno, what's the best way to either, I guess it's easy if we're going to keep it, and how do we do it if we want to zap the $300 from Florida Association of School Administrators?
Well, let's see what the rest of the members think about it, if there's any discussion from the other members.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
That's all it involves, either 300 or no, not...
Okay. Yes. Thank you for doing that as well.
Oh, you're welcome.
So I appreciate that. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thank you for doing that. And I think that the Florida Association of School Administrators would be an important one to have our ad because, you know, they have candidates who are familiar with Florida law, et cetera. So I would be in favor of the additional $300.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Patrica?
I had part of my board member comments tonight, so thank you for doing this.
You're welcome.
And I'm comfortable with the additional 300 as well.
Anyone else? Okay, see, and no further discussion. We will do this by a hand vote, so all in favor of, as it stands right now, please... I'm sorry, Mr. DePree Bruno?
Ms. Jordan, if we could do a roll call vote, because sometimes staff is having a hard time seeing the hands.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Kittens?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
Aye.
Ms. Giavennelli?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
And yes for myself, please. Thank you. Okay, we are to the attorney's recommendation.
Before...
DePree Bruno?
Thank you. Before we go to the attorney's recommendation, Madam Chair, I'd like to go back to item B1. That is not a consent, it's not part of the consent agenda, so we do need to, the board does need to address that issue.
Which one is it? I'm sorry. Resolution. B1?
Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution, approval of the resolution proclaiming September 15 through October 15 as National Hispanic Heritage Month?
I move that we approve the resolution for proclaiming September 15 through October 15, '21, as National Hispanic Heritage Month.
Can I second it?
Thank you, Ms. Kittens, and thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Is there any discussion? See, and no discussion. Can we please get a voice vote again? Or can we do that on here? Ms. Thomas? Okay, thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Kittens?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
Nay.
Ms. Giavennelli?
Nay.
Ms. Fisher? And yes, five to two, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Mr. DePree Bruno, we'll move to the attorney's recommendation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are three attorney recommendations for this evening. The first one is the approval of the settlement agreement and release for Judith Johnson in the amount of $450,000, inclusive of all fees and cost.
Thank you. You have heard the attorney's recommendation that the board approves the settlement agreement and release for Judith Johnson in the amount of $450,000, inclusive of all fees. Members, is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve the settlement agreement and release for Judith Johnson in the amount of $450,000.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Is there a discussion? Ms. Giavennelli?
Yes. I brought this up over a year ago, April 2020, I believe it was, that there was possible whistleblowers regarding this, and yet, no one listened to me, no one wanted to investigate, no one wanted to do anything. It fell on deaf ears. When is this board going to be a board and do and protect our taxpayers' dollars? Now we have a whistleblower that we have to pay $450,000 to that we shouldn't have to do because we should have taken care of business back when this was brought up. I'm very disappointed in this board, and this is more than $450,000. I will be supporting it because this whistleblower, as I stated back then, and I've stated for the last five years, it's the culture of the district, and this is a perfect example of what is happening at the district that needs to be rectified. And I am hopeful, under the new administration, that we won't have this happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? See, and none. Okay, we have six and one abstained.
Who abstained?
Ms. Fisher.
Okay. Ms. Fisher, if you could just state the reason for the abstention, just in one sentence, pursuant to the statute, at this point, since this settlement is pretty much over, we can disclose, just in one sentence.
So I'm abstaining from this vote because I have information that this person is not a whistleblower but an offender, and I have personal situations that I witnessed, and so I feel like I can't vote on this.
Okay, and we will complete the appropriate form and attach it to the minutes.
Mr. DePree Bruno, did you have any...
No, ma'am.
Anything else with that? Okay. So can we go ahead with number two of the attorney's recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The second recommendation is the approval of the designation of the Executive Director of Safety and Security, David Newland, as the board's sergeant-at-arms to assist the board chair and parliamentarian in keeping decorum and order in the chambers during board meetings.
Thank you. You have heard the attorney's recommendation that the board approves the sergeant, the sergeant-at-arms that will assist the board chair and parliamentarian in keeping decorum and order in the chambers during the board meetings. The sergeant-at-arms is empowered to warn individual members of the public and remove individuals from meetings when necessary. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move that we approve the designation of the sergeant-at-arms.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher, do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Morgan.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Seven, zero. Thank you. Mr. DePree Bruno, will you please state your... Ms. Dupree Bruno, will you please state your recommendation for number three?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next recommendation is the approval to allow the Superintendent or Designee to implement safety measures to include back searches and wanding and anything else for the safety of the public, students, staff, and the board during board meetings pursuant to Board Policy 4.09, Threats of Violence; 2.03, Campus Disorder and Trespass; Florida Statute 1,006.145, Disturbing School Functions; Florida Statute 7,90.115, The Prohibition of Possessing or Discharging Weapons or Firearms at a School-Sponsored Event or on School Property; Florida Statute 7,90.06, Prohibiting a Concealed Weapon at a School District Meeting, and numerous other bodies of law.
Thank you. You have heard the attorney's recommendation that the board approves the good cause item number three, approval to allow the Superintendent or Designee to implement safety measures during board meetings. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move we approve to allow the Superintendent or Designee to implement safety measures during board meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan, and a second, please. Ms. Fisher, thank you. Okay, and please record your vote.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion. Sorry, Ms. J.
Yeah, I'm actually going to be supporting this tonight. I, for the last probably four years, I had requested to have metal detectors used and implemented at different, actually in schools, at different places, at different times, just sporadic, to protect our students and to protect the staff here at the district as well. And then a year, a year before Parkland, I had requested it. It was never even given any thought, actually, or... But I find it needed. It's time to make everything safe for everyone. This is not just, has nothing to do with the present audience and what's been going on. This is something that goes back before Parkland. I felt the need. So, and obviously, Parkland proved that there is a need. So I will be supporting this tonight. And it's all about safety. This is safety that we can control and something that we should be controlling. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Javonelli, for your comments. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Gittens?
Yes, I like Ms. Javonelli had spoken, I think when I first got on the board and we were discussing safety and some of the safety measures that the district was instituting with cameras and that type of thing. And if you go back to 2019, I did bring up metal detectors and other safety measures. And like Ms. Javonelli said, this has nothing to do with tonight. I've been bringing this up for the three years I've been on the board. You have no idea when something happens, and it's too late after something may happen. So it's not against any individual, any group, anything. I've been bringing it up before. I think we should have it in schools. And I was told that in schools, they didn't have the staff to man it. And I begged to differ at that time, and I beg to differ now. So I felt, you know, some of the other measures we talk about taking, if we stop the weapons at the door, then your children and everyone's children should feel safer when they're in the room. It's not about us up here personally. If, I feel like, you know, when God says, "It's my time, I'm going anyway." But why not keep people safe? And that's why I will support it.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Is there anyone else has anything, comments? See, no further comments. I would ask for you to please record your votes. Okay, seven zero, motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is our public hearings. And Dr. Savage, please present your recommendations for this evening's public hearing items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Approval to adopt policy, P1, approval to adopt policy 1.171, Audit Committee in Compliance with Changes in Related Rules, Regulations, and Statutes to Adopt Best Practices and to Promote Transparency and Accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be September 1, 2021.
Thank you. We will now re... You just did the one?
No, all three.
Was all three? Okay, perfect. We will now recess the regular school board meeting and open the public hearing. As indicated, the public hearing this evening is to consider approval to adopt policy 1.171, Audit Committee in Compliance with Changes in Related Rules, Regulations, and Statutes to Adopt Best Practices and to Promote Transparency and Accountability. The effective date of the adoption shall be September 1, 2021. Approval to adopt policy 1.172, Audit Selection Procedures in Compliance with Changes in Related Rules, Regulations, and Statutes to Adopt Best Practices and to Promote Transparency and Accountability. The effective date of the adoption shall be September 1, 2021. Number three, approval to revise policy 1.20, Community Involvement in Compliance with Changes in Related Rules, Regulations, and Statutes to Adopt Best Practices and to Promote Transparency and Accountability. The effective date of the adoption shall be September 1, 2021. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on these three items. The time allowed for comments is three minutes. Is there anyone on the right side that would like to speak? Thank you. If you would please go forward. And if there's anyone on the left side that would like to speak on these three items. Ms. Christine?
Pocket. There we go. Can you give me my time back?
Yes, we will. We will go back.
Thanks. Hi, Christine Divageli here. So I'm going to comment on both your audit committee and your community involvement one. Audit committee, that's a long time coming. You guys needed that for a while, since we've been out of compliance in our audit department for like a while now. You know, we don't have enough people for a quorum. So I certainly hope that no one's going to fight some of these audit committees, this audit committee vote today. You know, we're trying to, in the heart of transparency, I would hope that every board member thinks that we need an audit committee here. And then I would also like to comment on the public or the community involvement part, where I'll give you guys a little bit of a kudos, but we'll see if you vote yes on it or not. I do think it's a good idea for you to give community members an opportunity to continue the Zoom, the Zoom meetings. I was able to attend a DAC meeting a few weeks ago. If y'all don't know what a DAC meeting is, it's a district advisory council meeting. And all members of the public are welcome to join. I suggest you join. And it is available on Lee County Schools, on their website. If you go to their calendar, under their calendar of events, it's hard to find, but it is available. That's that meeting that we watched the other day on YouTube. Well, you can actually attend if you go to the district's website. So I hope to see so many of you there next time, okay? Because they went over a lot of stuff. And certain board members were even in the room with us. And it was super fun to hear their suggestions. So I do think that you guys should vote yes on that. Think it's a great thing. And you should vote yes on an audit committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tara Jenner, sorry it took me a moment to pull this up because the internet here seems to prevent us from connecting without using our own data a vast majority of the time, just as a point of order. One of my biggest concerns is whenever there's any kind of a group that you guys set up...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Jenner. Could you please, it's three minutes. I just want to make sure we have the right minutes on here.
Thank you. One of the concerns that I have is whenever you guys set up any kind of meeting or committees or whatever, you always start talking about forming the advisory groups, councils, and committees, and making sure that the effort is there to reflect the racial and ethnic composition of the current Lee County community population, whenever possible. I understand the reasons behind that, but I have never seen anything that gives a very easy, one-shot indication for anyone in the public to see exactly what that translates into and whether or not you actually have arranged in these meetings for people that can have or are in need of services, whether it's for the hearing impaired or whether it's for people that speak foreign languages, whether, we have a lot of people that speak Spanish and Haitian in the area. But I don't see that that's ever been addressed, and I haven't ever seen any breakdown on that. Having said that, I'm also of the opinion, and this is just my personal opinion, that the makeup of a room to match the community is not as important as having individuals in that community that are looking at the factual bases that are being addressed rather than special interest components. I have never voted for or against anyone based on any of their physical presentations, whether that is melatonin level, gender, height, weight, ethnicity, language, whatever. And I'm never planning on doing that. I look at the character of the individual and the content of what they bring to the table. And I don't see that as being the priority here. You're focusing on external things. But even when you focus on the external things, you're not giving us enough information as a community to let us know exactly what that breakdown is. And I don't see, when you have a policy like this, that you're including individuals that might need or have language barriers, whether that's need for ASL or another foreign language. So that's just my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak, please?
Denise Nystrom. I applied for two committees. I didn't hear from anybody. But then, of course, based on the district that I live in, I probably will not be selected. So I would like if, when people make application for those committees, if they would all go, for example, to the Superintendent so that everybody is considered. Because I strongly feel it's because I show up here that I will never be considered for any of those committees.
Is there anyone else? Thank you for your comments. At this time, the public will... I'm sorry, I'm going backwards here. I will now close this public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting of August 31, 2021. Dr. Savage, please restate your recommendations for this evening, public items. And if we could do it one at a time so we can get the approval for each one, that would be great. Thank you.
No discussion, Madam Chair?
Yes, Madam Chair. First item, approval to adopt policy 1.171, Audit Committee.
Thank you. You have heard the Superintendent's recommendation that the board approves the to adopt policy 1.171, Audit Committee to, in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes, to adopt the best practices and to promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of the adoption shall be September 1, 2021. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move that we approve to adopt policy 1.171, Audit Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. May I have a second?
I second Morgan.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. And please record your vote.
No discussion on this?
There is not. Ms. Dupree Bruno?
There is a discussion if they want to have a discussion.
There's a motion, there should be a discussion.
I'm going down, I'm just reading. So is there discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
Thank you. I mentioned this at the meeting, I think on Monday, and I just want to reiterate. I agree with most of the comments that were made, that we, this audit committee has been too long getting across the finish line. However, I want to make sure that in the section, I think it's three, Section C, starting at line 30. And some of the comments were referring to this. I'm not going to not support it because we need to get it across the finish line. But I am concerned with verbiage that says, "The board shall take care to choose individuals appropriate qualifications and backgrounds such as certified public accountant, attorney, or certified internal auditor," period. And then the next sentence says, "The board shall choose individuals with accounting industry," or whatever. It kind of leaves the connotation to me that we're looking, first of all, for CPAs and attorneys and certified internal auditors. I hope that in complying with this and each of us selecting individuals, that we consider that whole first and second and third sentence. And going further down, realizing... Someone sent me an email about this the other day. And the comment was whether we want someone that does not have all of these credentials and everything that are dealing with our, you know, massive and large $2 billion district. And my response was, I don't think all the rest of us on this board have all of these qualifications. And we, on a regular basis, vote on the $2 billion budget. So I think we should take into consideration qualifications, but not excluding people that have experience. There may be someone that, you know, has a business and do their own and really understand, but they may not be a CPA. I would hope that we don't do that. And in response to what one of the speakers said about reflecting the racial and ethnic composition, I think that ethnic part does address somewhat to what you were saying. And I don't feel that that's saying we have a quota, that we got to have this many of these and this many of those. It's just saying that we need to be aware of what our community is all about and giving an opportunity to everyone that wants to be a part. In response to the last comment, we all are, you know, required to select. And first, the first filter is your district. You know, I represent District 5, so that's who I try to put on the board so that District 5 has representation. And I hope that all of us will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion, or questions? Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I'm going to say thank you to Mrs. Gittens for bringing that up. I do believe that we need people with some kind of financial expertise. We're talking here about the board auditor, right?
No, this is the audit committee.
No, but we're talking about the audit committee to help with the selection of the board auditor.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Who look at each of our departments and make recommendations for potential improvements. And I think that someone with, you know, an independent business or someone who works in a bank or even in a store could be that kind of a person who could lend some valuable contribution to helping us find a board auditor. There are a lot of people who are not financial professionals like a CPA or a certified auditor who have a lot of knowledge about budgets and finance. So I would... Mrs. Gittens, for those comments.
Thank you.
I support that.
And I believe that's what it says. It's given you such as, the certified. But then if you read on, it does say people with experience. So the experience is in financial, and it just gives you a multiple of different industries and such. So it's not just for CPAs. So that does give us the opportunity to look at a broader field as well. Is there any other comments on this? If not, I would then please go ahead and record your vote. Do you need a hand vote on this, Ms. Thomas? Okay. Okay. Because mine didn't. Oh, here it is. Thank you. Okay, motion carries, 7-0. Dr. Savage, could you please restate item two, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Approval to adopt policy 1.172 Audit Selection Procedures.
Thank you. You have heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approves to adopt policy 1.172 Audit Selection Procedures, in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes, to adopt best practices to promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be September 1, 2021. Board members, is there a motion to approve? Ms. Vaughn?
I move to approve to adopt policy 1.172 Audit Selection Procedures.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Discussion? No discussion? See no discussion? Please record your vote. Thank you. Dr. Savage, please state your number three.
Yes, Madam Chair. Approval to revise policy 1.20 Community Involvement.
Thank you. You have heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approves to revise policy 1.21 point zero one, geez, 1.20 Community Involvement, in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes, to adopt best practices and to promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be September 1, 2021. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve policy 1.20 Community Involvement Opportunities.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens, and may I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Ms. G. Thank you. And discussion, and I will say that we are, we have changed this policy 1.20 to accommodate the Zoom, which we now can have for all of our meetings. So this is to keep that there for the convenience of those who will participate in person and for those who will want to participate via Zoom. Ms. Gittens?
Yes, I do support the policy as well, although I have had experiences in some of the advisory boards where if some are in person and some are on the Zoom, that the telecommunication is not that great. And I don't know if it's something we need to look at through technology or whatever to make sure that we do have the proper equipment to do that, so that those that do attend via, you know, telecommunications are still as much a part of the process and of the group when there's a combined of both. So I would just request that we take a look at that and see how we can make sure that it's up to standard.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Is there anyone else for discussion? See none? Please record your vote. Okay, next, we're moved to other business, which is board member comments, and I am going to start with Ms. Giovinelli.
Of course you are, because I'm always the one.
Okay, I'm not going to start with you, Ms. Giovinelli. I just took that back. Ms. Morgan. I'll come back to you. Please, Ms. Morgan.
I left my comments on my other computer, and I'm not, they're not coming up here. So I'm going to ask that somebody else go ahead while I pull up.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
I'll go ahead. First of all, I wanted to mention that I really, the improper word is enjoyed, but I really appreciate it, tonight's indication. I think the rabbi was spot on in her message, and apparently, many of the members of our audience also were paying attention because I heard, "Thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself," mentioned numerous times. And of course, that is very appropriate as we start our mask mandate tomorrow, because, yes, all of us agree by following the science that a mask, like the one I'm wearing, is not going to keep me from getting COVID if somebody comes up close to me, and, you know, even though I am fully vaccinated. However, it does mitigate the chances of my spreading, even though I'm fully vaccinated, I may be asymptomatic, of my spreading it and loving thy neighbor and looking out for others. And I think that's an important lesson for all of us. I think all of us sometimes forget that. I know I'm guilty of forgetting it, and I think all of us need to take this message to heart. Secondly, we did a lot of thank yous yesterday. For those of you who didn't hear, we covered a lot of bases, and I just want to reiterate that for anybody who didn't hear. We have all of the school staff from district administration, district staff, in all corners of this school district, and I would say especially the school-based personnel have had to be very, well, to use the operating word, agile, I would say flexible in what they, in what they did, what they do in their teaching plans, in the number of students that are showing up for their classes. So thank you, thank you to everybody that has been helping with this, along with our volunteers. The one group that I was remiss in thanking, and I want to do this right now, I want to send a personal thank you to the 200-plus parents and other constituents and teachers and other staff who have sent me in the past two weeks since our last school board meeting, and it goes right through last night, they've sent me messages of thanks and support for the controversial stand that I made about wearing a mask. And I do send special thank yous personally to all of you who did that. Thank you very much. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Morgan?
Okay. This evening, we approved three resignations. Elizabeth Wiff, who is a big loss for us. She was the Health Services Coordinator, backbone of our COVID protocols for the past year, recognized by the superintendent as his employee of the year. I'm sorry to see her go. I'm grateful for her commitment to the district at the time and the work that she did. Andrew Brown is also leaving, a longtime employee of the district, respected individual, and he has moved on, and I'm sorry to see him go. And then finally, I want to recognize Trey Davis, our Information Systems Chief Information You know, I'm someone who believes that opportunities to learn and grow sometimes are limited within an organization, and you need people coming in from the outside to look at things a little bit differently and to help individuals and programs learn and grow. And Mr. Davis came in with a vision and a commitment for a certain period of time to use technology systems to support the mission and vision of the district. He and his staff have created a foundation and a network that has transformed the way people communicate across the district, the way they administer and manage. So I want to acknowledge his contribution, and I also want to acknowledge Dwayne Alton, who I understand will be standing in as acting CIO, and I'm really excited for you and glad to see you take this big step. So thank you. Thank you both. Thank you all. The other comment I would make is that I have been asked by several people, two people didn't support, didn't verbally support the superintendent's recommendation at our meeting Monday night, board members Gittens and Giovinelli, and people have asked for purposes of transparency if they would offer their support or indicate whether or not they supported the superintendent's recommendation. And those are my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Morgan. Now I'm going to Ms. Giovinelli.
Okay. Couple, oh, let me see what date with this. I sent an email out regarding RSM. I don't know what day this was. It was a while, it was a couple of weeks ago, oh, 8/13, excuse me. And I am bringing this back up regarding that we do not have presently an auditor in place, and we need one per the statute. I would like to make a motion, and I move that the chair reach out to RSM and utilize the board attorney, if necessary, to inquire if they would be willing to be our board auditor once more.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Morgan?
I believe it's our practice not to bring up motions that have not been previewed with the board, so I can't support it. Thank you.
I sent this on August 13. I don't know if you can't read, but I sent it on August 13.
Wow.
Okay, Ms. Giovinelli.
They've had plenty, she's had plenty of time. I'm sorry. I disagree.
But let's just please be respectful to each other. Ms. DePree Bruno? Were you going to?
No, I'm not. I'm just getting, I'm just preparing, in case.
Okay, so we're in discussion. Ms. Patrica?
We just approved a policy to help us hire a internal auditor, and this is premature. I can't support it.
Any other discussion? Ms. Gittens?
Yes, I have brought up several times and on several occasions that we needed to have, whether it be interim or short or whatever, that we needed to ask RSM to at least help us during this time. They were a part of this process of selection for the Audit Committee. They are aware of it. When I brought it up, I asked the chair to please talk to them about that and never really got a response. I understand that, I mean, I don't recall if you spoke to them or not, but there was no firm response. I asked at one meeting to have the discussion with them as to, you know, what actually might either help them to decide to come back and help us, or what was the actual reasons and specifics? Because here's the point, we can move on and use this new process and choose the best person and best company in the world, but if the same thing happens to them and they feel the same way, for whatever reason or for whatever thoughts that someone doesn't like the way they're doing this or doing that, we cannot afford to be in this position again. We cannot afford to go through months and months and months and not have the people in place that we need because of whatever. We have drug out this Audit Committee thing now for almost 10, 12 months. It's been almost a year. And that is just unexcusable to me. It really is. And to have somebody at least in there so that they're helping us do something, we're flying by the seat of our pants right now, for a year. And it's just not right. They were there, they didn't do anything illegal, they didn't do anything wrong, and if so, then we should have turned them in. We need someone. There were various reasons, we still don't have it down as to why they're not here. And I think if we just, you know, put our tail between our legs and put our head down and bow down and say, would you help us? We still, with what we passed this evening, we still got to get that committee, everybody's got to decide who's going to sit on it, then we got to decide if you like the people I put, and we're just going to go on and on and on. We need help, so just bury our pride and ask them, would they please help us until we get to this point? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. And Ms. Giovinelli, you?
And if we had utilized RSM properly over a year ago, we wouldn't have paid out almost $1 million to whistleblowers. So we would be ahead of the game by far. So I don't think that we need to allow board members to run off our employees, and RSM would be our employee. And so we need one. We need to apologize, like Ms. Gittens said, and we can't wait for the candidate being kicked down the road for the committee. The, I'm not, I don't have a problem with the committee working with RSM, but we need to have something in place, even if it's for a short period of time, six months or something. But we are right now without an auditor, and we need one. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will let you know, and I have said this before, so this is not the first time I'm saying this, I have spoken with them, and it's not, has nothing to do with one individual board members. It's the fact that they were not able to do their jobs. They kept bringing things to us, they wanted MOUs, they wanted to be able to have the ability to do something for $1,000 or $10,000. Multiple people said no. So it's not one person. That was it. That's what made them say, I cannot do my job. I'm being held kind of like hostage to not do my job. So it's not one person, and we keep, it keeps looking like we're pointing at like an individual. It's not one person. And when, and I've talked to them multiple times, and it has nothing to do with one. It has to do with the whole dynamics of, we have a job to do, we're trying to do our job, we bring these things to the board, we're told no, we then say, can we just at least have a little bit of leeway with the chair or the attorney, you know, saying it's okay for us to do something for this amount of not to exceed XYZ, and they're told no. That was the last straw. That was the last straw for them. And then they, they don't want to do that. They don't want to put their employees through that, and, Ms. Giovinelli?
And I spoke to them too as well, and they said that, you know, until we find value. But now that we have an Audit Committee, that we'll have one in place, I think sooner than later now, because we have this policy, I think RSM will be more comfortable. And working with the Audit Committee, we will be able to move like a district, like we should be doing with utilizing the auditor and an Audit Committee together, and those functionalities will work and be cohesive. And then I think this board will work better. So I don't think, certainly, RSM did nothing wrong, so I think there's nothing wrong with RSM. So I think, I think it's just a matter of now putting everything in place, and RSM will come back. They told me, when we find value in it, they will, I mean, they didn't have a problem. So I think that working with this committee now will be the piece that was missing. Thank you.
Right, and they did say to me, they would consider only if there was an Audit Committee put in place first, and that that Audit Committee would be the ones who come up with the recommendations, and they're like the go-between. That is what they, that's what they said to me. So again, once we, you know, get our members on this committee, then we can reach back out to them once more, have that conversation with all of us, including the Audit Committee, of what we are looking at, and possibly move on with that. Yes, we do need to get this done as quickly as possible. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, so then I would suggest at that point that we, since we are not in statutory compliance and we do need a board auditor, that is required, that we go ahead and review the procedures and select the Audit Committee as soon as possible and put that as a priority for one of our next as soon as possible workshops and get the show on the road.
Patrica? Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
If I may, through the chair, ask Dr.
If I may, through the chair, ask Dr. Savage. How quickly, Dr. Savage, could you get staff to put together applications and get them out, do you think? Could you guesstimate a timeframe for us, please? Because I don't think we need a workshop. I think we just need to get applications out, and then board members need to review them and make appointments.
Well, then, well, yeah, that's what she's going to ask, because that'll have to go out on the public, so that public can also sign up. Dr. Savage?
I can work to provide a response, but we're guesstimating somewhere between 14, just two to two and a half weeks to try to put that together.
And could I also please request social media, you know, we're looking for audit committee members, when the application is completed and we push it out to the community, if I could ask for, you know, social media engagement, just whatever tools you would utilize to push something out on a wide basis. I would appreciate that.
Yes, I am certainly not the person you'd want to do that.
Well, not you, but.
But I have, our communication staff is far better than I am at that, so I'll certainly bring it to their attention as well.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And then, Dr. Savage, with that, and then, once that has taken place and it is pushed out there, then when these applications come back, it would behoove all of us to make sure that we get them, we read them, we contact people, and we make decisions and turn those names in, so we can make this happen as well, so we don't hold anything up on our end. Ms. Gittens?
Through the chair, may I ask a question of Attorney Bruno?
Yes, please.
Attorney Bruno, prior to RSM resigning, it was my understanding that you and they were working together to put together this whole process that we just voted on. Is that correct?
Yes, RSM did assist with the development of the policy.
Okay, so, again, I state my case. They were involved with it. They helped put it together. We are still, two weeks is going to turn, and 14 days will turn into more. Guys, we are in the midst of a crisis and everything else. Everybody is stretched to the nth degree, and I think putting something else on the plate of other staff members, because we don't want to just ask RSM to step in for three months or six months to help us do this, is putting more work on staff, and I always often hear you guys say, we can't put more on staff, and, you know, the superintendent, they are, you know, knee-deep in alligators, and putting something else out there, it would just make it simpler. They helped put it together. So, why can't they come on for three months and help us get, actually choose people from the, help us choose them? Help us set up what we're looking for. Do the people that the superintendent is going to use or whoever to put out the application, do they actually have the experience and to know what we're looking for and what works best? Or would a company that has been doing it and that is helping other districts to choose their committees not be the best person to help us?
Well, Ms. Vaughn, I'm going to get to you. One second. The audit committee, I mean, the RSM would not pick or pick the audit committee, because those audit committees are the ones who have given them instructions, so it is not, they will not be doing that. The application is just how we get our other committee members. We put that out there, they send them back into us. It's not going to be any different than that. And RSM is not going to just walk in here without a new MOU telling us what they want, and a part of that would be working with an audit committee and not dealing with, I'm just, I'm going to stop right there. Ms. Vaughn, please.
Okay, and Madam Chair, I respectfully say that perhaps you should have reserved that judgment till all of us were done, but what I want to say is, I really respect and liked the services offered by RSM. I was very unhappy when I heard of them quitting, and I had some, and I still do have some pretty good ideas why. Yes, I think there were some things coming from the board, but also in the previous administration, because I had dealt with that with the previous superintendent a few times. I believe there were some, there was some heel dragging purposefully on that. That said, I oppose bringing in RSM as an interim or for a short time, as much as I like that organization, because my feeling is, if we bring them in and we don't have all our ducks in a row with what we have just passed, we are setting ourselves up for another debacle. And yes, I am upset, and many of us, and I'm one of them, have kept saying, well, when are we going to do this? When are we going to bring that up? But at this point, I really do think we are setting ourselves up for a big fall and with RSM and maybe messing ourselves up with other potential firms or auditors if we don't get these ducks in a row. And even though I hate waiting more time, I'm not going to support a short-term ask of RSM without everything else in alignment.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn, and I truly was not trying to put a judgment. I was just, I just wanted to state facts of, from, through conversations that I've had with them. And I guess we could, I mean, if we, we could put a date on here, no later than the, today is the 31st, so if we want to put a date certain to make sure that we have this information out, and by the end of the month, have that put together. Is that acceptable to everybody?
I think there's a motion on the floor, shouldn't, I'm sorry, I didn't get recognized.
There's a comment, and then if she wants to.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Well.
Change the motion or?
Not in a moment. I just, my thought process is that the fact that, well, it doesn't have to be short-term. I remember, I don't know if everybody on the board here went through the whole hiring of the auditor, but there was very, there was very slim pickings. I mean, it was very difficult. This is their expertise, school boards. They came highly recommended from FSBA. I've spoken to other districts, and they use them. This is their expertise. I don't, I think that just keep kicking this can down the road, and we're going to end up with RSM anyways. And then, we've, we've been without noncompliant another month, another 60 days, another 90 days. I think we're derelict in our duties, quite honestly. And I don't understand why, why this, why the resistance for somebody that's very reputable and very professional? And on our part, we were the bad ones. So, let's just, let's just get the auditor in place, let's get, so they can work with our audit committee, and let's just move on and be compliant. That's where I am at, and I will not change my motion. Let's vote.
Thank you.
Just going to call a question.
Okay, so could you please restate your motion?
I move that the chair reach out to RSM and utilize the board attorney, if necessary, to inquire if they would be willing to be our board auditor once more.
I'll second.
And second, and may I have a hand vote? Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
Ms. Vaughn?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Patrika?
Nay.
Ms. Giovannelli?
Yes.
And Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
And I will reach back out to them, so yes, so that's four to three. Do you have any other comments, Ms. Giovannelli?
I have another motion now, then, that, once this was passed. I move that if RSM agrees to be our board auditor, that they be immediately reinstated under the terms of their prior SOW, and that the new proposed SOW they presented to the board until such time as the board can enter into a new SOW with them in order for the board to have board auditor, to have a board auditor as required by statute.
Second.
Would you like me to read that again?
Second, you second it? Okay. Is there a discussion? Ms. Thomas, did you get that motion?
And I can email it to you.
Would you please?
Yes.
Thank you. That's good. So, is there any discussion on that? CNO discussion? Ms. Giovannelli, will you please reinstate, restate your motion?
I move that if RSM agrees to be our board auditor, that they be immediately reinstated under the terms of our prior SOW, and that the new proposed SOW they presented to the board until such time as the board can enter into a new SOW with them in order for the board to have board, a board auditor as required by statute.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Patrika?
Nay.
Ms. Giovannelli?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
And nay for me. So, motion passes. Four to three. Ms. Giovannelli, is there anything else?
Yes, I have my comments for this evening. That wasn't my comments.
That was not your comments, huh? Okay.
I would like to thank our staff for the dedication they have shown these first few weeks of school. Thank you for the public who came out last night and tonight to share your opinions, as I always welcome your feedback. Prior to the start of school, I asked my fellow board members to meet, to discuss our COVID protocols for the upcoming school year. My requests were ignored. Yesterday, I asked for transparency in how the district reports COVID information and clarity in quarantining messaging. Although I did not vote on a mask mandate last night, the opt-out option has been removed, and a mask mandate will go into effect tomorrow for all students and staff. I do not support the decision, and I continue to believe that parents have the right to choose what is best for their children. The message you heard from the Lee County School District in the past weeks leading up to school was, do we have ma, no masks? Yes, masks. No masks. So, in the past two weeks, there's, there would, there was no mask mandate this year. When you were, when we, when they were notified of the mask mandate the day before school started, the information was not provided as only an opt-out option at that point, but it was short notice. And I think that's the mistake that we made as a board by not having the discussions to have the proper communication. And that's a mistake that I will own as well, as this board should own, and to make it better for our students and family and faculty and staff that has to work in the, in with, in this COVID environment. They were provided an option out, and now that's been revoked. Masks are only one piece of the puzzle in COVID mitigation. We have many other issues that must be addressed to prevent the spread of COVID, like overcrowded classrooms, countless staff absences on top of staff shortages, a crisis in Transportation Department, unnecessary quarantining, COVID reporting problems, inadequate turnaround times in contact tracing, and constant, inconsistent protocols that were not brought before the board for our approval. This mask mandate will serve as a makeshift Band-Aid, but it will not truly address all issues we have and has greatly impeded the trust of the public in our relationship and our leadership. I am disappointed in the communication that went out today to parents. As I understand it, an email was sent out to parents that stated masks would be required for everyone tomorrow in school, on school property, and at indoor athletic activities. Our communication did not explain that the opt-out was being removed. Our communication was not clear or concise. I received many calls and emails today about the whole, the email that went out, expressing concern with the poor communication. People stated the email is unclear. They asked, do we stop, do we still have an opt-out option? What kind of masks are required? What's the protocol if the mask is not worn? When our communication changes so rapidly, we must make sure that it is clear and precise, and that people are instructed properly. Since we failed to do that, I will try to make it as clear as I can. At last night's board meeting, our superintendent chose to exercise Board Policy 1.1, 1.181, giving him the authority to mandate masks on our school campuses for everyone. He removed the opt-out option. That has been put in place, giving parents the right to choose. Starting tomorrow, students and staff must wear a mask in school and on Lee County School District property. What kind of mask did your students wear, you ask? We shouldn't have, we should have guidelines for that. What is the protocol if the mask policy is not followed? I have not been informed. We have taken an action that addresses one aspect of fighting COVID. I'm sorry for those of you that feel let down, misled, or misinformed by the board. To be crystal clear, if we wouldn't have been, if we would have been asked to vote last night, my vote would have been no. There was not enough information, both sides of the information was not provided or shared with our district and our whole community. I wholeheartedly stand with parents' right to choose what is best for their child. This is not my authority, and I will not overreach my power or anything further than that. I will continue to ask questions and to advocate for every student, staff member in Lee County. I choose to wear a mask tonight because I respect those around me. I had, I was at a conference this past week, so I've been around a lot of people, so I'm respecting my, the, my individual board members. And that's my choice, and I respect others to have the same choice. If I can encourage, I would encourage vaccines. Please stay home if you are sick, and I thank you, and those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Giovannelli. And Ms. Fisher, please.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, I was trying to get your attention prior to Ms. Giovannelli's finishing her comments, but I just want to make sure there was a procedural issue that I did not bring to your attention timely with regards to public comment for those two motions. So, if there's any member of the public that would like to speak, and I don't know if that would change anyone's vote, if anyone wants to speak about the RSM issue. Does not appear that anyone does, so I just want to make sure that the public had that opportunity.
Dupree Bruno? Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thank you. So, I want to appreciate again the comments that we heard this evening, and I just want to say that it is our responsibility to provide for the health and safety of all children in our district. And I also want to repeat something that I've said many times over the years, which is that parents are our most important partners in your child's education. That being said, we are losing some very valuable employees who have contributed much to this district, and I want to say thanks to them and wish them the best of health and happiness in their new endeavors. And Dwayne, it's been a lot of years that you have been in that department, and I remember when I first met you, I didn't understand a word you said, and then when Trey came along, I understood even less, but thank you for all you do. Ms. McClung, thank you for all that you have done to support all of the work that has come in front of this board, and we really appreciate you. And all of our staff have been going above and beyond the call of duty, both at the district office and in schools, and that is much appreciated. With that being said, I wish everyone health and safety and blessings. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. Gittens?
I have notes, and I don't know if I'm going to read them, I just will speak. I do want to say why I did not, why I voted nay on the agenda. I have said over and over and over again, I will not vote on anything or any agenda that has moving forward on Veterans Park Academy project, because I don't feel that it's being transparent. I do know that- I do know that I have a meeting this Friday, I believe it is, with the superintendent and some of the people involved. And I am not sure why in that meeting all the people that have contracts on here tonight are not going to be at that meeting. I don't understand why that's not happening. And I would like to publicly request that everyone who is mentioned on L4 that have signed contracts, when I was told previously that I could not meet with any of them because the contracts were in negotiation, and I quote, "would not be done until October or November." So I'm a little bit confused as to seeing these contracts. Are there several contracts throughout the process, or is this starting yet? And the bottom line to it, I just feel it's not being transparent. I still say the name of it, Veterans Park Academy. And I'm told we have plenty of time to change it, but I'm told that out of one side of people's mouths and on the other side, we're just continually moving on and on and on. I do not think it's the best thing for our community to have a mega super school. And it was supposed to be that they were, I heard from, was it Maintenance or Construction, at one point when school ended, that they were going to get in and refurbish all of the portables that were over there because they were in such disrepair. And they had to put the sixth graders in there, but then I heard, "No, it has to be fifth whatever." And then I went on a tour with the principal, and he showed me the areas of the old building that would be used temporarily until they got the portables fixed. And then they'd move the kids in there, then repair the building. Well, every time it comes up, I hear that repair the building means painting those bricks and putting down new carpet and changing the paint to match the rest of Veterans Park Academy. It does not sound transparent to me. I don't mean to be mean or nasty about it. I just feel like I'm not getting the straight story to it. And I keep getting different stories. So I'm not pointing a finger or blaming anyone. I would just like to know the truth. If you have no intentions of doing anything but putting in 16 million for the Performance Arts and 8 million to fix up and paint and put carpet in that old building, which I remember, we were told the reason they were moving them over to the new building was to get a new start, to get out of that old building. So then why are you painting and putting carpet and putting children in that building again? I don't understand. And if you can explain it to me so I can understand it, then I'll get off of it. But I just can't at this point. There has not been a real open forum for the community to talk about it. And I won't go into the previous thing that was done. So I would like to publicly say I want to see some transparency about it. I want to have a true town hall where people are explained the actual truth, what is going on, and why the lion's share of the money is going for Performance Arts Center, which was supposed to be a black box theater. And 2/3 goes to that, and 1/3 goes to the school where they're going to be sitting and doing academics. I don't understand. So that was why I voted like that. I want to say some of my board members like to push me to do what they want me to say. It happens all the time. And tonight is no exception. So I think there was no question whether or not I approved what the superintendent was doing in my comments yesterday. But let me back up for a quick second. For the last month, every time the situation, the conversation about masks came up, I raised my hand, and if you can go back and look at it, and what was the thing I kept saying? "How are you going to enforce it?" I've asked that over and over and over again. How are you going to enforce it? I had nightmares, literally, of waking up and seeing something that I hope and pray does not happen tomorrow morning with people showing up saying, "Yes, my child is coming in, and you will educate them." And yes, we have a reason we have to do that. But then I look at the numbers. I read the letters. I talked to the people. There was a conversation where the secretary said, "A lady called in today, five people and her family. One person got it, then everybody got COVID. And she just doesn't know what she's going to do at this point." When I see suffering and pain and numbers that I see, again, I go back to my, "The building is on fire. We cannot sit around and talk about who started the fire. We've got to turn on the fire hose." And the best way to do it is not going to be the best for you, or you, or you, or you, or maybe for me. But we had to do something. And as I said yesterday, which should have left no question in your mind where I stood, it's all a part of a multi-pronged litigation. And I regret and apologize to people that think that at least I, as a part of this board, were blaming masked or unmasked people for this pandemic. I in no way, shape, or form have done that. It is everything. I personally feel that it has to do with not having enough help to test, not having enough help to back up and do the forms and find out who's got it. And by the time we get over here, 10 more people have been at school all week, and then you're backed up again. There are still people that are ready to come back after having COVID, have not received a phone call. I own my phone. Every other day, we get some texts saying there was a case at the district office, and you will get further information. Well, that's a text. If you're a parent and you get a text like that and say, "Wait for further information," you're sitting with pins and needles. Okay, was it somebody that sat in the front row next to me and coughed? Or was it somebody that had a meeting in the boardroom when we weren't here, and they sneezed all over my desk? Who was it? Where was it? Well, HIPAA says, "We can't tell you." You can't tell me what part of this huge building or if I was affected? And then two to three weeks later, you get an email that says, you know, "It was in a certain area, but we can't tell you." I can't imagine people with children going through this every day. You have multiple children, like the lady was saying. Multiple children, and you send one, and they come home with parent calls and say their child was crying. She was wearing a mask, and there were kids in the room in her class that got sick and weren't feeling well. And she was so afraid that she was bringing COVID home to her family, and she was in tears. And she was wearing a mask. Masks are not the end-all, cure-all. The testing isn't. The vaccine isn't. It's everything together, and we have to work together to put the fire out. But we have to start somewhere. And yesterday, the superintendent said, "This is where we can start." We have to start. And in answer to that as well, please, I've told you all before, threatening that you're not going to vote for me does not make me lose sleep. If any of you ever sat up here and had to deal with all the stuff that I've dealt with in the last three years, you'd ask me what was wrong with my head if I did run again. And if I do, if I win, I win. This is where God wants me to be. I don't know how and why. And if I don't, I don't. But I can tell you one thing. I've worked as a teacher. I've worked in the district a long time. And now I've worked behind the curtain at Oz. So I do know this district. I do know this district inside and out. I will not go away. So it's your choice. Don't vote for me if you don't want to, but I'm not going away because the issues that I fight for sitting here are the same issues that I fought for forever and will continue to fight for. So please just stop looking at me and threatening, you know, "We know we're going to vote for you." Don't. My husband will be happy. So, you know, we got to move on. Turn on the hose. Let's put some of the fire out, but we have to do it together. I just hope and pray for everyone tomorrow that no matter how angry or upset you are, that you will put children first. And someone mentioned, I think it was yesterday at one of the meetings, "Have you talked to your children?" I saw a report on the news, and there was people protesting about masks and no masks and all. And the reporter stopped and asked this one kid that had a sign. And she says, "What do you think about this?" He said, "Well, if I don't wear the mask, I can't go to school, and I just want to go to school." And he said, "So it's okay for me." You can look it up. It's on YouTube. And it was just a simple kid that made a comment. Can we just get back down to a more base level? Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
I'm really sorry. It's late, but we didn't have a briefing. So I've got some stuff I have to say. I'm really sorry. So through the chair, Dr. Savage, I had my first call to the COVID hotline today, and I was really impressed. I'm really tired right now, so I'm going to have a hard time getting my comments out, but I was really impressed. They were so patient and so kind and so overworked. And I've got my first 15 minutes or however long I'm going to be in there tomorrow to actually see behind the scenes. I just needed you to have that positive feedback. They didn't take my name until the very end of the call, so they didn't know it was me that was calling. So I just got randomly whoever picked up the phone, and I think I got the real experience. So positive feedback there. We do have three, and the rest of my comments will be about our resignations. We do have three resignations tonight. Beth Wiff, we could not have gotten through last year without her. I am concerned about how we're going to move forward without her given the high level of expertise she showed. She was our Employee of the Year last year. And I'm really sorry to see her go. Andy Brown, his reputation precedes him in the law enforcement community. His reputation is beyond question and above reproach. He is considered incredibly ethical in all of his activities and actions. And I will say that I think both of these people were stolen by our Sisters to the South, Collier. And Collier's got a good district. And Collier obviously saw something in them that, well, not that we didn't see for both of them, but at least for Mr. Brown, that we didn't necessarily see in him. So I'm sorry to see both of them go. Mr. Davis, I worked very closely with because I am the Safety and Security Liaison from the board. And obviously, a lot of security issues reside in Mr. Davis's department. I'm going to tell the board a story. I was new to the board when Mr. Davis was hired, and I didn't understand a word he said. And frequently, people will give you tech speak in order to cover for a deficiency, right? So I didn't know if he was real, if he was actually as smart as he sounded. So I have a brother who was offered the CIO position of a large multinational manufacturing corporation headquartered in Finland. He ultimately turned the job down because he didn't want to move to Finland, but really high-level CIO-type thinking like Trey. And Trey was going to Boston. My brother lives in Boston. And I said, "Hey, Steve, will you have dinner with this guy and see if he's the real thing? See if he's the real deal?" Trey didn't know that was why I was hooking them up. I just figured two computer geeks could sit and have dinner together. Anyways, they had dinner together. I think you were up at MIT for a conference. And my brother called, and he said, "You have got to hold on to that guy as long as you can possibly have him." And it is true that Trey hired us as much as we hired him. So I'm going to do a little bit of a walkthrough memory lane with you. It wasn't until I had been on the board for a couple of years that I started to really talk about cabinet members in my annual evaluations of the superintendent because it took me a couple of years to get to know them. So 2019, what did I say about Trey Davis? CIO Trey Davis maintains a positive work environment that he is helping to spread through the entire district. His initiatives continue to make the district a leader in education technology across the nation. Trey's ability to negotiate with vendors so that we can provide cutting-edge technology in our classrooms in an affordable way has proven to be extremely beneficial. And Trey's focus on safety and security gives me great confidence. As a footnote added today in 2021, I will talk about the $40 million in savings that you have brought to this district through your ability to negotiate. 2020, what did I say about Mr. Davis? I said, "Mr. Davis continues to move IS ahead of just about every other educational institution in the country, inclusive of post-secondary institutions. The Learning Impact Platinum Award is certainly an example of the innovation taking place under Mr. Davis's leadership. But the proof can be seen each and every day when we tour schools, talk to teachers and staff, and see a higher level of collaboration between departments at the district than we have ever seen. In addition, from a customer service perspective, this is the thing that's closest to my heart, the placement of many of the required back-to-school forums online was tremendously helpful to parents, and the feedback regarding this has been very, very positive." Finally, last year, what did I say about Mr. Davis? In response to, I was talking about Dr. Adkins's response to COVID, and I said, "In the process, Mr. Davis has proven yet again that he possesses exceptional negotiating skills. He and his team were able to secure the devices and internet connectivity needed so that each one of our students and staff members had access to a device and access to the internet during the fourth quarter shutdown. The bandwidth and security necessary to accomplish this, including the rollout of Lee Home Connect and the explosion of enrollment at Lee Virtual School, has never been questioned. The technology adaptation to the district's immediate and unprecedented need to convert to Zoom classrooms and meetings was incredibly smooth. New, necessary technology and software have been carefully vetted so that students and teachers were set up for success. The acceleration of the installation of Promethean boards during the fourth quarter shutdown was prophetic. All of this has been accomplished while planning for future technology needs and advocating for statutory changes needed to effectively secure district assets from threats that are increasingly sophisticated." That's a lot. You've done a lot. And while I really look forward to the implementation of the succession plan that you have worked so painstakingly to implement, the man to your left, Mr. Alton, I am excited to work with you moving forward. You've got huge shoes to fill. And Mr. Davis, I am just so incredibly grateful that we had you for as long as we did. Thank you for your service to our community. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. And I will be short with my comments as well. Trey, thank you for the last three years of helping me out here. I really appreciate it, and I wish you all the best with whatever your new venture will be. Also, I want to say too, I do really appreciate everyone who works in this district. I know how hard everybody is working. I've had the opportunity to work within the schools for the last couple of weeks, and I see the stress. I see how hard everybody is working. And, you know, even though I'm just in the lunchroom helping them, you know, with the kids, giving them that free time to do whatever little bit that they can do or be in there greeting the kids in the morning, speaking to the parents, I think, you know, just seeing all that and just seeing everybody, how they're pulling together and working together, it's really heartwarming to know that everybody is. Even in the cafeteria, you see people from the different locations jumping in there and just working, you know, side by side to make sure that the kids are fed. There's just so much going on out there. And, you know, that's not even, you know, all the other emotional things that are going on with our children, you know, coming in, and maybe their shoes are too small, they need another pair of shoes, they don't have another uniform to wear. They're all dealing with all of that as well as trying to make sure that they're educating these children. But I also wanted to say too, and I'm sorry that some of our members have left, we did have a health and safety protocol prior to workshop, prior to school starting. So I just wanted to put that out there. Perhaps some were not able to attend that, but we certainly did have that in advance. And we continue to get updates daily, as often as they possibly can. As far as the updates, the COVID room, I was able to go in there and train. We're trying to put more people in there so that way they work together with the IT department to make sure that we can have that communication. they work together with the IT department to make sure that we can have that communication. And maybe Dr. Savage is, will speak on that, so I don't want to bust his bubble. But, uh, everybody's working together to really try to...
I see Dr. Atkins.
Dr. Savage. Did I call you somebody else? If I did, I apologize. But everybody's really working hard, you know, together to, to make it work for, for all of us, because we are definitely in this together, whether we like it or not. We will, you know, we are going to get through this, and I just want to make sure that we all understand that. And then, uh, perhaps, um, Dr. Savage, and, um, and your comments, because I know we had quite a few people speak about Home Connect and the understanding of that virtual, uh, option, and how we're still looking at, you know, what we can do for that. Options, options. And, uh, last but not least, uh, thank you again for, to all the law enforcement who are here today, uh, tonight with us, yesterday, and, uh, just for keeping us safe in here and outside of here. And I thank you all. And Ms. Dupree Bruno?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no comments.
Thank you. And Dr. Savage, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have just a few. I first want to acknowledge Trey Davis. I believe this is his last and final day with us here. Uh, but I know, uh, his, his leadership and his contributions will be felt for many years to come. Wish him all the best. Also, want to give a public nod to Dwayne Alton. A big part of leadership is really about succession. Uh, it's your, uh, one of the, the kind of truisms that I always believed in is lead yourself out of a job. If you're doing a good job, you're building up the people around you so that they are ready to take that mantle. And so while, while Dwayne and, and Trey are very different people, I, I know that we're in great hands, uh, with Dwayne's leadership as well. So thank you, Trey, uh, for all that you've done, but also thank you so much for investing in someone who has been a part of Lee County's past, present, and future, and we're just so lucky to have you as well, uh, Mr. Alton. But, uh, but thank you, thank you, Trey, for everything you've done for us. I also want to share something very important from our Dunbar family. Um, you know, so Dunbar High is a near and dear to my heart with some of their work, but they had a, a really, um, unique situation that had occurred very early in the school year, and I, I wanted to share it, but I wanted to wait until the results of, um, the, the outcome was shared. Uh, this really kind of speaks to one of the most important things. I got a call the day it happened from the principal who said, thank you so much for pushing for two SROs at all of our high schools, including the ones in City of Fort Myers. Um, he said, it literally saved a life today. And so I wanted to share this email that Carl sent to, Carl Burnside, for those who don't know, sent to his faculty. Uh, I'll make sure we, we just do not read the student's name. Dunbar family, I wanted to update you to let you know that student continues to progress, and it appears that she will be released soon. Also, I wanted to share with you about the same, the actions of members of our Dunbar family who came through in the crisis. First, Jill Clausen, who's a reading teacher, activated the emergency card, which alerted us to the situation, as well as making a call, and was amazingly calm throughout the entire medical episode. Second, our fantastic Fort Myers PD resource officers, David Sanchez and David Wood, assessed the situation and not only made the nine-one-one calls, but knew that the situation was dire and called for the AED to be brought to the classroom as they began to administer CPR. Ms. McEwen graciously asked if she could be of assistance by bringing Mrs. Clausen's students into her classroom as I directed them to leave. When I checked later, she had involved Clausen's students in the lesson. Both officers, along with Coach Sammy Brown and ESE Para backup clinic person, Ayesha Lee, enacted the CPR protocols. Ray Romero ran downstairs to secure the AED machine. The student's situation required the usage of the AED machine several times by our Dunbar team keeping her alive. EMTs finally arrived, and they continued the process and eventually stabilized her to be transported. During this time, I felt helpless, as all I could do was be in the room watching quietly pray. I was later informed that the hospital medical team stated that if not for the quick actions of the team, the child would have died. I wanted to share with you about the amazing actions of members of our Dunbar team of heroes. If I omitted anyone who assisted, charge it to my head and not my heart. It is a reminder of why I'm so proud to be the principal, such an amazing school with amazing people. Below is a picture that Officer Sanchez received from the child's mother yesterday. I hope it brightens your day and serves as a context, that in this difficult time of the pandemic, there are still some great and positive things occurring that we do have, some things of which we can be thankful. Carl Burnside. I share that with you, um...
Yep.
I share that with you because it's a, you know, not only was the emergency response cards that are part of a response to Elizabeth's Law, something our governor, um, and the legislature put in place so that we could immediately issue that piece, but that the quick actions of the law enforcement officers there, the lifesaving devices, and all the team, coaches, paraprofessionals in the clinic, the teachers, everyone moving quickly into action. The child, allegedly, it was minutes, uh, that the child would have died had it, had it not been for those pieces. So that is an awesome thing to see, and the young lady, I saw a photo of her, and she is smiling and happy, and completely was discharged from the hospital and is doing very well right now. Um, so it's just a good, brightened story to share because she was, um, in very dangerous shape, uh, for, for quite a while. So I wanted to share that with you. Uh, the last thing I want to do is just to address the masks piece, because I understand that's kind of like the, it's going to be the elephant in the room for the next thirty days. Uh, and so I just wanted to kind of remind any of our public who are watching and unhappy with the mask mandate to please bring your concerns to our district office, and please do not blame the schools. Uh, they did not have any opportunity to participate in this decision, so please do not take out any frustrations on school staff, as we are the ones who are responsible. Also, this is for thirty calendar days, which in September results in just over twenty school days. While this may feel like a major change, it is actually just a return to where we were just a couple of months ago in June, um, and it was a way of work that we had implemented all last year. Uh, the only major difference is that we don't have the Lee Home Connect option, just in, in kind of response to that piece, um, because that, the state would not give us that flexibility to permit that type of innovative learning model. Uh, that's just a, one of the, the, the pieces. We did not have, none of the districts had that availability of this year for those innovative learning models. However, we do continue to try to attempt to find workarounds so that we can still provide the, the, the approved models, but supplement with ways that more closely mirror what the families became accustomed to, uh, in that effort. And so we are working on that piece. Um, we still, though, also want to make sure we follow all the laws. I just want to kind of acknowledge that this is a turbulent time in general, and just between the pandemic and the polarized politics, I think we can all acknowledge that the pandemic has completely disrupted our way of life, uh, but so has the manner and sources in which we consume information. Uh, so from my perspective, and I'm just going to try to do this without choosing sides, you know, if you're a person who listens to news and consumes articles that reinforce that masks are useless, that they provide no benefit, that local hospitals are doing just fine, and that it is a liberal agenda or special interest conspiracy, then when your local school system requires masks, it offends that person's worldview in a deep and personal way. But conversely, for people who listen to news and consume media that reinforces that masks are part of a larger comprehensive strategy, along with vaccines, and the portrayal that our hospitals are filled at dangerous capacities, then that person equally finds anyone who rejects that as crazy. Um, it is becoming exceedingly difficult to find common ground. We can't seem to agree on any type of objective reality or facts, and in an educational policy setting, that makes a task far more challenging. I want to state that I really believe in the Constitution. I believe in democracy. I do believe in parent rights and freedoms, but authority is also vested in governmental entities as well. I think we, as those governmental bodies, should embrace challenges to our authority and visibly offer up what we believe our defenses are. Due process and our various checks and balances and governmental procedures hopefully do provide the remedies or access to remedies for any who are inclined to exercise those freedoms. I also believe that we are in the midst of a very serious mental health crisis, and I don't have an answer for that. I try to greet each day and each person with compassion, even for those that wish harm on me, our school board, or others. Uh, we have been faced with an unprecedented trauma, and it has affected so many of us in profound ways. And unfortunately, we aren't out of the woods yet. Winston Churchill famously said, when you are going through hell, keep going. And I don't know if this is our darkest hour. I hope that it is, but I'm not sure that we're there yet. I hope for our schools and our community that brighter days are ahead. I will not lose hope or faith in our community, and I will do everything in my power to be a part of anything that allows us to come together as one governance team, one district, and one community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. The next scheduled board, the next scheduled meeting of the board, on Tuesday, September seventh, there will be a board workshop at one. On Wednesday, September eighth, there will be a board briefing at one, followed by a special meeting at five oh five and an extra meeting at six PM. At this point, see any other business to come before this board, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and be safe.